And I would like to call this August 26, 2019 council meeting to order. And I would like to have Nicholas Myleski come up to the microphone and who's an Eagle Scout and to lead us into the pledge allegiance.
Will you please join in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk, please call the roll.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Starcher.
Here.
Coin.
Here.
Heffinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here. Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I moved at the minutes of, let's see, July 8th, July 22nd, and July 31st, meetings be approved as prepared and submitted by the clerk.
Second.
Discussion on the approval of the minutes. Would the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Reports from standing committees, Finance Committee met prior to council and will again meet in two weeks, Health, Safety, and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Health, Safety, Sanitation doesn't have any meeting scheduled, although Mr. Durham and I, the mayor was out of town, but Mr. Durham, I attended the LST Advisory Committee last week, so nothing to report from there, except we're hopefully going to be actively promoting the EMS levy that's going to be on the ballot in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shields, Public Properties.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening, no meeting scheduled.
Special legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening, but I have two things on, two things in special legislation that I'll be bringing up in the next few weeks. One is the, we have a proposal to improve the legislation on demolition. And the second, the second assignment to special legislation that we'll bring, bring up as soon as I can schedule a meeting is the upgrade of the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report at this time and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Water and utilities, Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report, no meeting scheduled this time.
Thank you. Emerging technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report, but I am looking to schedule a meeting sometime in September and this time invite Armstrong so they can present their upgrade plans.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee, we have 19-131 budget amendments, 19-132 amend salaries and benefits code for the chief probation officer pay grade and establish a deputy chief probation officer and pay grade, 19-133 adopt job description for chief probation officer, 19-134 adopt job description for building custodian muni court, 19-135 approve capital improvement plan for the MCRC and expenditure, 19-136 increase PO 2019-0489 signal service co for the street department, 19-137 state bid purchase for a 2020 Chevrolet Malibu, Malibu for the police department, 19-138 approve HPB historic landmark designation for 205 South Prospect Street, 19-139 fiscal year 18 chip private rehab for 3877 Miller Drive Brunswick, 19-140 then and now for 87 Circle Drive private rehab for the fiscal year 18 chip, 19-141 authorized formation of Energy Special Improvement District project and levying special assessments, 19-142 grant application for Ohio Public Works Commission, 19-143 approve ODOT Bridge Inspection Program, 19-144 Delta Airport Consultants Task Order Number One, 19-145 expenditure over 15,000 for game time playground equipment, 19-146 approve Mayor's Pledge NRPA 10 Minute Walk Campaign, 19-147 increase expenditure for Cooper's Leading Edge for sanitation, 19-148 bid for South Court Water Tower Improvement Project Job Number 1060, 19-149 City Hall Parking Deck Materials Testing and Inspection Job Number 1030, and 19-150 fiscal year 18 chip private rehab for 33 Circle Drive. As you can see, a lot of them built up over our break. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome council back from, from the break and looks like we're going to keep you busy for a little while. The parking deck on the south side of City Hall here is going to begin, the construction of the deck will commence next week, the week of Labor Day. And the available long-term lots, these lots are going to be the City Hall Lot and the lot between Sully's and Porter's is, are going to be virtually unusable. Available long-term lots are at the southeast corner of West Liberty Street and South Elmwood, the lot on the west side of the 200 block of South Elmwood across from Napa between Smith and Washington, as well as the existing parking deck behind the Common Pleas Court. This project will last three, starting next week and last into early 2020. The farmers markets will continue each Saturday on the square from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. until October, mid-October. The State of the City will be presented to the Medina Chamber of Commerce on Tuesday, September 3rd at 11:30 in the morning at Williams on the Lake. Tickets are available at the Medina Chamber office or on their website. I will then present the State of the City to council on September 9th between the Finance and Council Meeting, likely about 6:30 p.m. After both presentations, it'll be also available on YouTube, the city website, and the Medina TV channels and portals. The 10th Annual India Festival USA will be held September 14th at Independence High School from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And that address is 6001 Archwood Road, Independence, Ohio. They wanted me to publicly announce it at this meeting and the September 9th meeting for anybody interested in coming up. They have activities for the kids, it's free, as well as food, the food you have to buy, but, but all the activities are free and entrance is free and parking is free. I'm going to be presenting a proclamation later that evening in a ceremony that they have along with a number of other mayors from the northeast Ohio region. And then last but not least, I'd just like to wish my wife happy birthday, or I'm sorry, happy anniversary, 41st anniversary. And I'm here with you, council, instead of, instead of home with her.
We appreciate that.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you are all aware, we recently received initiative petition and then a referendum petition. We've gotten, that's the first that we've ever received of either of those in my tenure here. So we've gotten quite an education from the Law Department on the process for those. They were both held for 10 days by the Finance Department and taken the Board of Elections. In both cases, the Board of Elections returned results and I kept you apprised by email that there were not sufficient signatures. So that's where we're at with those. Councilman Simpson mentioned the levy for the emergency medical service. The levy is termed EMS, we call it LST. Want to make sure we put some information out about that. The levy that the city is asking for, council voted to put it on the ballot this fall, is a renewal and increase. It is, the reason for the increase is this levy has not been increased in 20 years and with a property tax levy, we do not get inflationary increases on the collections. And actually, collections are less now than they were 20 years ago because the state has changed some things with the property tax that have cost us a little bit on the collections. Over those 20 years, costs have increased substantially for the life support team. Some of the equipment they use is a lot more expensive. We have some examples on a, of video that was made for the cable TV. If you have questions about that, certainly be happy to, to address those. The trucks are more expensive, the equipment that's in the trucks are more expensive. I can tell you, as someone who has had family members picked up and saved by the life support team, it's a wonderful organization to have, they're very good. They recently, recently were awarded Gold Plus by the American Heart Association. These things are wonderful to have, they are not cheap, and I hope you'll support the levy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report. It's good to see all of you back.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back, everyone. We had our national night out on August 6th, it went well. I'd like to thank Target for cosponsoring that along with the Police Department, as well as our public safety partners that attended, police, fire, and EMS, and those of you who attended as well. We have implemented our new CAD RMS program, and for anyone who doesn't know what that is, that's Computer Aided Dispatch Records Management System. This has been a project we've been working on for probably more than two years, and we finally implemented it two weeks ago. So we're working through some of the bugs and hiccups, but it's going smoothly thus far. And lastly, we have filled our final vacancy. We hired Matthew Atune, a Brunswick resident. He started the academy, the OSP Academy, on Monday, so he will be out in several months and then he'll begin his field training program with an FTO here at the Medina Police Department.
Thank you. Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back. Just a couple items to note for council and the public. On Friday, August 23rd, I had the honor of taking part in the AI Root Company 150th Anniversary Celebration. What was really interesting is there are less than 3% of companies that hit a five-year generation family owned at 150 years, so it's quite an accomplishment and several of the elected official, I mean, there was obviously a lot of history that was given that day, but one of them mentioned Root Company put Medina on the map, so I think that's true. One of the things that Secretary of State Frank LaRose presented to them was they found the original articles of incorporation and printed them and had them framed and presented those to Brad Root, so that was kind of a, a nice little token to remember the anniversary. So for those of you that attended, I appreciate you coming out and if you weren't able to attend, if you could just maybe send them a note, we'd appreciate it. Our next round of ribbon cuttings is set, set for September 20th. And again, these are in conjunction with the Medina Chamber of Commerce, the Main Street Medina. So we have a full day, we actually have six events, starting at 10:00 a.m. with Echelon Independent Living at 635 North Huntington Street, and then at 11:00 a.m. a new leaf massage and wellness, they have a new retail business at 1075 South Court Street, Suite 200. And then at 1:00, we have Partake Kitchen, which is a grand opening, new business at 236 North State Road. And then at 2:00, the Hope Recovery Community, which is a nonprofit, moving into the 200 Highland Drive location that used to be the Children's Center Building. And then at 3:00, the Bumblebee Village Expansion Project at 725 North Court Street, she bought another building and it's called Bumblebee La La Land. And then at 4:00, the Medina Summit Battered Women's Center and Rape Crisis Center, another nonprofit that's moving to 696 East Washington Street. We are taking the month of October off for ribbon cuttings, but we are going to be working on our, rolling out our Made in Medina County Manufacturing Expo, which is held, will be held on Friday, October 4th. We have, our keynote speaker is John Ratzenberger, who's an actor and manufacturing advocate. Some of you may know him as Cliff the Mailman from Cheers, and he's also the voice in a lot of the Pixar movies. And he started a America Makes program, and so he will be our keynote speaker of the day. We have over 500 students attending from all of our school districts throughout the county. And right now, we have 55 manufacturing companies registered to participate, 21 of them are actually City of Medina companies. We also are expecting a little over 1,000 people, and our resource room has already been filled. So if you would like to see John Ratzenberger, the tickets are $40, and you can buy them at www.madimadinacounty.com. The actual Manufacturing Expo that starts after the keynote is free to the public. So if you just want to see John Ratzenberger, it's $40, and that includes breakfast, so I hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome back to council. Just a couple of quick announcements. Just a reminder for the public that this will be the Memorial Pools last weekend. We will be open Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Labor Day, 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., pending the weather, of course. I want to thank the community for the continued patronage and patience throughout the pool season. It was another great year serving the community, and we look forward to having many more. The next scheduled Rec Advisory Board meeting is Thursday, September 19th at 7:30 a.m. at the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I wanted to congratulate Nick Myleski on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. He did a wonderful project in our park system, so appreciate your contribution. Secondly, I, from the finance meeting, I wanted to thank, publicly thank the Medina Sunrise Rotary for their donation of approximately $21,000 to install a new playground at Memorial Park. We're going to hope to do that this fall, weather permitting. And then lastly, our splash pads will close September 3rd, it will be closed for maintenance while we put a new computer in at Fred Greenwood Park and do some concrete work at Ray Mallard Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The mayor mentioned the City Hall Parking Deck Project, which starts next week. Another project that is starting next week that'll affect the residents is the South Elmwood Bridge. That is scheduled to start Tuesday, September 3rd. That's the bridge on South Elmwood, just south of West Smith. That project will require a closure in that area. Closure's going to be 75 days long, and for most of that time, it'll be closed in all four directions. There will be detours set up, but wanted to make the public aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pacoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to Mr. Patton's closure, we're contemplating closing South Elmwood between Washington and Smith for resurfacing, and that will be during, sometime during that time while the bridge is being worked on. Also, street crews have been painting, mowing the right-of-way, performing catch basin repair, concrete pair throughout the city, and we want folks to know we are still following up with the high grass violations, and we will continue to do so during the growing season. Thanks.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, Petitions, we have two. We have a liquor, liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a D5L permit to Carnivore Meets LLC, 320 South Court Street, Suite 100, Medina.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Discussion? The clerk, please call the roll on the liquor permit.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Unfinished business, we have done introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted to the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, sir.
Before break, this council introduced, researched, had held hearings on, and passed amazing piece of legislation. My question tonight is about something that residents have been complaining about for some time, and that council still has not acted on, and that is the deer overpopulation of this community. Residents continue to complain as it goes unaddressed. The curious question is why is there no rush to get this situation taken care of? And when will council address the issue of the overrunning of deer in our city? Who is making sure that the deer in our neighborhoods leaving their waste in our yards are not carrying the chronic wasting disease, otherwise known as zombie deer, a derivative of perhaps mad cow disease? We know it has hit at least 24 states, including our neighbors in Michigan, Pennsylvania, and eastern West Virginia, and two Canadian provinces. Who is making sure we are not going to have the coyote problem that usually follows an overpopulation of deer? Right now, we're worried about deer eating our flower beds and destroying our property, but the coyotes bring a different problem. How many traffic accidents? I understand that the chief is keeping those kind of statistics, but does he have the monetary value of damage, of hospital bills, insurance costs? Are we keeping all of that data? Does anybody here know the total dollar damage caused by deer? And does anybody here care? My final question is, can you commit eight months to this problem? Before we move on to another social issue? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't know, Mr. Worley, if you just could give an update on the, the website and things that have been done for the past five or six years?
Yeah, thank you. In the beginning of, or the end of 2014, we presented a deer management plan to council, and we talked about it at committee, and identified five things that we were going to start keeping track of, because there is difference in perception of what is a problem and what isn't a problem amongst residents. I do hear a lot of the concerns that you had mentioned. We are doing five things, as I stated, we're collecting trend data that includes deer vehicle accidents, carcass pickup. We are doing spotlight counts of deer in October and November during peak rut and off peak rut to visually identify deer in specific locations that are predetermined by our park staff and recording that. We're also keeping track of formal deer complaints that come to our office. I would like to talk to you about that. We have a program that's outlined on the website, as well as technical guidance that's provided for the city residents to, it was compiled from information that was given to us by the Ohio Division of Wildlife on how to manage deer on your own property, because we have to have commitment from the residents to help deter deer from their property, to stop feeding the deer in the city, and work as a community to come up with a consensus on what should be done and what shouldn't be done. And the most important thing that we're doing right now that we weren't doing back in 2014 is collecting all this data, so that when we do identify that there's an issue and we go to the state, if we have to go to the state to get a permit for whether it be culling, whether it be bow hunting, controlled, controlled bow hunting, we have to have data that supports that. We can't just go out and do it. And this was the first step that we have taken action on, and we're still collecting data, and I'll be happy to bring that information to the award meeting that we have upcoming, and I can also distribute it to you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council?
I'd like to comment on it, too.
Mr. Lamb?
Yeah, and I, and I want to compliment the Parks Director because this, this, this issue, which was frequently brought to us during, during award meetings, went through special legislation, I think, beginning in 2014, and was, was looked into in depth based on the things we could do and the things that we can't do, and then the things then that we could do that we thought would be effective. And over quite a long period of time, the Parks, Parks Director and the Parks Department worked on a very comprehensive program to help residents deal with deer in your yard, deer eating, whatever your issue was with the deer, including a, online, you can, you can sign up online, the city would send an employee out one time to help you to look at the issue that you have. Because what we found is, most of the things that folks would mention that you, you know, to get rid of the deer isn't going to happen, but there are many effective things you can do to lessen the degree of, of damage, if you see it as damage from the deer. And it was quite an interesting process, but it was a lengthy process, and if you look at the city's website, it's, it's, it's really pretty comprehensive, and if you compare what the city has on their website with what other communities generally have on their website, you, you can't help but see that it is a comprehensive, responsible way to try to address a very difficult issue. There's been a lot of development surrounding the city over the past few years, and every time there is a clearing of, in a development, a clearing of property, that's a habitat where deer live, and so they're going to find someplace else to move, move into. Secondly, the city of Medina has more parkland per capita than any other city in the state of Ohio, and in those parks, there are, there are deer. So a lot of other things play into this idea that you can simply, you know, shoot the deer and get rid of them, and that's your answer to the problem. It's a much bigger issue than that in dealing with it, and my sense from having worked on it with the Parks Department and with my colleagues on council is that we did it in a very reasonable, responsible, and, and workable manner, and I suggest anybody that has a, has an issue or a concern, either talk directly to the Parks Director, but prior to that, really look at the website and, and file the, you know, tell what your issue is so that the city is aware of it and can work with you directly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Coin?
Oh, Mr. Simpson.
Sorry. Don't want to prolong this, but Mike, I understand you're not the only one that has, has brought this to our attention. It's kind of unfair to say that we, we really were inactive, because as you just heard, we, we have been doing things, but what I always try to tell people, these are not Medina's deers, these are the state of Ohio deer. And as, as the Parks Director stated, there's, there's processes that you have to go through, through the state to get a permit for whether it be contraceptive or, or culling the herd. And as the mayor has mentioned before, and, and I think quite a few people, I can't speak for everybody on council, has agreed, because he's also our safety director, that there's no gunfire allowed in this, the city limits of Medina, including bow hunting, because the only way we could do that would be to do it in our parks, and there's no way that we can ensure, no matter how much we publicize and put up tape and to assure that there's not going to be somebody that didn't get the message and was in the park at the time that, that obviously there would be no, you know, gunfire in the park. Secondly, to assure that there, there couldn't be an accident with, with bow hunting, even though all that has been thought about, and, and like I said, we all are, are concerned. What, another thing that I would suggest that not just you, but I have done, and any resident that is, and rightfully so upset about the deer, I mean, we totally get it, is contact your state legislators. The surrounding states from Ohio have more than one week of, of deer hunting in November. Some of them have two, some of them have three, and I think, if I'm not incorrect, West Virginia has four weeks, Ohio has one. So it's not going to help in the city limits of Medina, but as Councilman Lamb said, all our surrounding townships, you know, they're all doing great and they're developing their land and into living spaces, but it's, a lot of times it pushes those, those animals, not on the other side of their, their townships, but into the city of Medina. And another, other big problem is people still, even though we put it in their water bills and it's on their website, people are still feeding the deer. And I went to the law director several years ago, probably back in 2014, because I'd had so many requests to actually have the city put out an ordinance against feeding deer. And the law director spent the time and researched several different areas in our states and surrounding states. You can't just put an ordinance out, there's two problems. You can't put just an ordinance out saying you can't feed deer, it has to be all wildlife. So anybody who wants to feed their birds or outside animals, they would be prohibited in that, but the biggest problem with, if you develop an ordinance like that, is how do you enforce it? So, so we don't have an ordinance, but we do repeatedly remind people, please do not feed the deer. And your point about the coyotes, we already have coyotes in the city, and it probably is because of the deer population, so. I hope the residents that are not here tonight and can hear our voice attend the, the award meeting, and, because I've asked Mr. Worley to go over the, the city's website, and again, what you can do to, to address it. And every time my wife comes home with a plant, a plant, I said, oh, how much you spend on this deer food? Because it's, unfortunately, it does happen, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Rose.
I just want to remind
I just want to remind the chair of the Special Legislation Committee, we do have a pending matter on special legislation for feeding deer. I would ask that, right now, that we bring that up in the next special legislation meeting so we can discuss it and start moving this in a direction here because Mr. Simpson is right. We have, you know, some issues here. Maybe there are some things that have come up since last research that we can do this because you go to any national park, do not feed the animals, period. Why? Because we're a city, do we have to do that? I don't know why we can't follow the same thing that national parks do. So, I would ask that respectfully that you bring that up on the next special legislation meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else up here, just in case? Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Caroline Shiner. I live at 534 Bronson Street in the city. I'm going to read this through because I have limited time. I moved here in 1988 and bought my house for $18,000 on Bronson Street. I bought it because it was old. I wanted to restore a house, and this one needed help, and the price was less than my car. Coming from Orland Hills, I could not understand why the house was so low. People soon told me it was mainly because of the bar on the corner of Foundry and Bronson since closed, but the stigma of the bar had deteriorated the neighborhood. It's been a long journey, but Bronson Street is losing the stigma. At least half a dozen homes that had been rentals have gone back to owner occupied, and home prices have risen to a high of $133,000, with several selling for over $100,000. One also sold on Foundry for $117,000. Now, I found out on Facebook that the old Foundry, now a place for karting, is expected to include a full bar and a brewery. I was told not to be concerned because this is a different clientele than frequent in the other bar, and as the yuppies and people with few dollars in their pockets do not experience the same effects of alcohol as do poor people. Supposedly, in Medina, we do not have spot zoning. We are a city that has adopted a comprehensive plan, and we have zoning laws. Certainly, this is not the type of community that puts bars and breweries in the middle of residential neighborhoods. The Foundry is still zoned industrial, as such karting is not an intended use. The business needs to and received a conditional zoning permit. To expand and serve liquor, referred to in the application as refreshments, they received a second conditional permit. They also received a liquor license. I seem to remember everyone getting upset about Serenity applying for a liquor license in a facility where one used to be, used to have a liquor license, used to be a bar, and everyone got very upset that Serenity was applying. But yet, two blocks north, in a residential area, it is somehow okay. Conditional zoning needs to fit the following standards. One, will be harmonious with and in accordance with the general objectives or with any specific objections of land use and thoroughfare plan of current adoption, which it does not fit. Will be designed, constructed, operated, maintained so as to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity, and that such use will not change the essential character of the same area. Number three, will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing or future neighboring uses. Number four, will not be detrimental to property in the immediate vicinity or to the community as a whole. Will be served adequately by essential public facilities and services such as highway streets, police and fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal, and schools, or that the person or agency is responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide such service adequately. Will be in compliance with state, county, and city regulations. And seven, will have vehicular approaches to the property which shall be so designated as to create an interference with traffic or surrounding public streets or roads. These are residential streets. This is not the, yes, they're not state highways. I also found that in the conditional zoning certificates in the code, page 108E, there are some further ones that also apply that were not given to me initially. I have... I would like to introduce for the record, and I will give you copies, just a few studies of alcohol being sold in residential neighborhoods. I shouldn't have to introduce studies, as common sense tells us, that bars and breweries do not belong in the midst of a residential neighborhood. The surprising results are that where alcohol is served, there is crime and violence that follows. It may not be even in the same neighborhood where it is sold because the person travels to another bar or to home. In addition, we have a mayor and a councilman who are both on our police force, and surely they have personal knowledge about what follows where alcohol is served. Just a side note, I was talking to a judge last week, and he said that bars that are prevalent in the city keep him in business. One of the reasons zoning is to protect residential neighborhoods and property values. When citizens elect public officials, we expect you to follow the laws you have set forth. We also expect you to protect us and our property values. I realize as a citizen, I have been remiss in not attending council and committee meetings. So, let me, I thought you'd look after us. There have been several instances recently where this council has thrown the trust of its citizens, its comprehensive plan, and its zoning laws to the wind in favor of commerce. I believe that this project cannot be changed. I know that. If I were wealthy enough, I would hire an attorney and at least get an injunction, as I do not feel the city has met its burden. I can, however, ask for some minimum considerations to try and make this a little more palpable and pray that we do, pray that what we know will follow will not happen. I am asking for the following. I would like at the corner where Foundry runs into Bronson, a right turn only sign so that people do not go down Bronson. We already have a problem there because people come out of there, and they think they're still driving go-karts, and they go down our street quickly. There are three daycare centers on our street, and for some reason, the children all play in the front yards and not the backyards. So, I think this should be taken into consideration. If there was a right turn only sign there, that would really help, and it would also help on the exit coming out from the Foundry if they were also not allowed to turn left. They only could go straight. I also like more police presence so that we don't have issues. I recently listed, and solo listing up in South Euclid, it's on a street going east and west, one block north of Mayfield. Marx put in a large plaza, and they, the back of the plaza, they put an eight-foot-high wall that separates the commercial from the residential, therefore retaining the residential nature of the area directly behind the commercial. I am asking for a wall. It is described to build a wall in the screening conditions in the Medina Planning and Zoning Code, 1149.05, page 146, and that is also in the attachment I'll give you. I would like the same consideration South Euclid gave its residents given here in Medina. I don't think the city pays for that. I think the developer pays for it. The tree planting does not work, as several of the trees the Foundry had planted in the past have died, and they are not, have not been replaced. So, I think we have two, maybe three, trees which certainly do not block. I also question noise ordinances and street parking. I would like them enforced. I'm worried they said that there'd be "tens of thousands of people," that's a quote, "coming to this facility," and that's going to put a tremendous burden on residential streets and a residential neighborhood. So, that's all I have to say, and I will happily give you the research I have and the three studies. The three studies I have, one of them is rather scholarly. The other one is, I believe, Guy was working on his doctorate and did find some research. And the third one is just how its alcohol establishment is related to violent crime.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. At this time, I'd like to call Nicholas Xavier Maleski up to the front here to receive a resolution.
You were supposed to come. They're supposed to send somebody to ask the specific...
Thank you. Did I say your name correctly? Hope I did. Okay. All right, we have a resolution to present to you. Don't be scared. Come on over. Okay. Okay. Resolution number 11719 is a resolution congratulating Nicholas Xavier Maleski on attaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Whereas Nicholas Xavier Maleski is currently a member of Troop 508, chartered in with the Medina Presbyterian Church, and whereas a result of considerable hard work in the areas of citizenship, physical fitness, character, and leadership development, Nicholas Xavier Maleski received his Eagle Scout Award, the highest award attainable in scouting, and now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Medina, Ohio, that the Medina City Council hereby commends Nicholas Xavier Maleski for his outstanding contribution to his community and Boy Scout Troop 508 in obtaining the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. That a signed copy of this resolution shall be presented to Nicholas Xavier Maleski in recognition of his hard work and dedication in obtaining this award.
It is my honor to make the recommendation to approve Resolution 117-19.
And mine is second.
Well, clerk, please call the roll.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Thank you.
And as we usually ask every Eagle Scout, what was your Eagle Scout project?
My Eagle Scout project was building bat houses for Reagan and Huffman Park. We did this so that way we can keep the bat population higher in Medina. It's useful for keeping away annoying pests like mosquitoes.
That's great. And Jansen, you probably think that's a great addition. Well, thank you, and congratulations. Wait, hold on, hold on. I guess we got another one. Hold on.
I'd like to, I'm not going to read the whole thing for you because a lot of it is repetitious probably, but this is a mayoral proclamation, and we thank you for your hard work. Okay, congratulations.
This is the first time in my tenure here that someone had the same Eagle project that I did. I built bat houses back in 1992 for my Eagle project and put them up in the parks. They've all since fallen apart, so I'm glad there's new ones now. Did you get a proclamation, Keith? Keith, did you get a proclamation? Yeah, okay. Still haven't?
Okay. Ordinance 11819, an ordinance authorizing expenditure to Chippewa Roofing LLC for costs related to emergency repairs to the city garage roof.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, while we were having some HVAC work performed at the city garage, contractors discovered that some areas at the edge of the roofline at the city garage were failing significantly, so this ordinance will allow for those repairs and prevent further damage to the decking as well as the insulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Well, clerk, please call the roll on the approval of ordinance 11819.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 118-19 passes seven zero.
Ordinance 11919, an ordinance authorizing expenditure to Main Street lighting for costs related to repairs and replacement of street luminaires within historic district.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the street department has identified 10 street lights, the luminaires within historic district that are in need of replacement. Some have been removed to date for safety reasons. The others will be removed upon replacement. So, the lights that are within one block of the square are eligible for the reimbursement under the capital improvement grant.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Well, clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 119-19 passes seven zero.
Now, ordinance number 12019 and ordinance number 12019 modified are going to be tabled at this meeting and be discussed at our next meeting. There's been further discussion regarding the rezoning of the South Court property at 1088 South Court Street regarding from a C3 to a high-density residential to a C3, and there's been discussion about maybe converting it to, from a C3 to a C1. So, there's further discussion that needs to be had with the residents, and I think council members want to be involved in that, so we're going to delay the discussion and vote on that until our next meeting on September 9th. Ordinance 12119, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of 12020 freightliner at 114 SD rear loader refuge truck from Bell Equipment Company to be used by the sanitation department.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Pacoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, this truck replacement is for a 2004 rear-load truck in the sanitation department that we discussed during the budget process. It has served the city well for 15 years, and we are purchasing this through the state bid process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 12219, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept four easements necessary for the West Smith Road reconstruction Phase III project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. As mentioned in the title, to complete the reconstruction of the West Smith Road between Commerce Drive and Lake Road, we did have to acquire four easements. The property owners did grant those to us, and this is asking council to accept those easements so that we can record them.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Well, clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Thank you.
Ordinance 12219, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to accept four easements necessary for the West Smith Road reconstruction Phase III project.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Patton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first amendment is to appropriate the funds that were donated to the city from the Cleveland Area Mountain Bike Association. We thank them for that contribution. The second item is for e-ticket parking system. The police did not anticipate this change. There was a new ruling, they can't use the chalk anymore, so that's why they need this new equipment to be able to do that. The next two are sales from the bicentennial. We have to appropriate that now that the sales have been made, so the money's come in. And then finally, there's a donation from the Medina Sunrise Rotary, and we appreciate their donation.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Well, clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 12319, an ordinance amending ordinance number 19518 past December 10th, 2018, amendments to the 2019 budget.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first amendment is to appropriate the funds that were donated to the city from the Cleveland Area Mountain Bike Association. We thank them for that contribution. The second item is for e-ticket parking system. The police did not anticipate this change. There was a new ruling, they can't use the chalk anymore, so that's why they need this new equipment to be able to do that. The next two are sales from the bicentennial. We have to appropriate that now that the sales have been made, so the money's come in. And then finally, there's a donation from the Medina Sunrise Rotary, and we appreciate their donation.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Well, clerk, please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coyne.
Yes.
Ordinance 12419, an ordinance amending ordinance number 19518 past December 10th, 2018, amendments to the 2019 budget.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President.
The first amendment is to appropriate the funds that were donated to the city from the Cleveland Area Mountain Bike Association. We thank them for that contribution. The second item is for e-ticket parking system. The police did not anticipate this change. There was a new ruling, they can't use the chalk anymore, so that's why they need this new equipment to be able to do that. The next two are sales from the bicentennial. We have to appropriate that now that the sales have been made, so the money's come in. And then finally, there's a donation from the Medina Sunrise Rotary, and we appreciate their donation.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will a clerk please call the roll on adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Motion passed 7-0.
A clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Starcher.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Heffinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Ordinance 125-19 passed 7-0.
Council comments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Simpson.
Yes. I'm going to have Councilman Starcher talk about the Ward 1 and 2 ward meetings, but I would just like to, which I, I'm always on a, I'm always on a soapbox at this time of year about getting people out to get registered to vote. It is so important. You've still got time, but I encourage everybody that's 18 and older to get out there and register. The other soapbox that I've been on forever is the way we treat each other. I know there's a lot of things that's happened nationally that, in my opinion, are inappropriate comments from some of our leaders. There's too much bullying going on. There's too much negative comments. We should, we should treat each other, everybody, with respect. Doesn't matter, again, as I've always said, doesn't matter if you're Democrat, Republican, independent, you have to respect the other person's opinion. You don't have to agree with it, but you have to respect their opinion, and just try to be kind to one another. And that's, that is so important. It's so important to teach our kids. And as the ordinance that we talked about a little over a month ago, bullying has no place in Medina. Negativity about one another has no place in Medina. So just live by that motto, be kind to one another, and register to vote. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Heffinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to state that it was an absolutely beautiful weekend to be outside, and we had two great events happening here. The first being on Friday night, the community garden behind the courthouse parking garage on East Liberty officially opened. It's been a very busy summer for the group Sustain Ed, which is a new group in town, but they are a dedicated group that likes to get to work. And in less than, just over four months' time, they came up with the idea, found the money with the help of the city, and when the commissioners, they were able to get land and build a garden for the city to use. It's like a beautiful park that we can add to downtown that is available for all of us. They have in the future coming up, a lot of applications for those interested in planting at the garden, so that when the garden season begins in early spring, it'll be available. But they're not done there at the garden. We've already got some landscaping coming in that will be planted soon, so just because the garden's open does not mean the project is over by any means. There's a lot more to do there, and a lot more that we'd like to add. So I spent most of my summer helping build that garden. Doesn't mean we're done. I'll still probably be there on the weekend, so stop by and say hi. The second thing is Medina Fest happened this weekend, and like you said, it was absolutely packed. I think our events are through-the-roof amazing here. Main Street Medina is doing a brilliant job at running them, so I want to compliment them. I want to compliment our businesses that are helping bringing more and more people into our beautiful community. I was there with Mr. Wright. We worked at the city table answering questions. Our residents are wonderful, and I like having the chance sometimes to just stand out there and hear what they have to say and some of the questions they have. So thank you, Mr. Wright, for spending the day with me.
Thank you, Mr. Starcher.
Thank you, Mr. President. A week from tomorrow, Tuesday night, September 3, we're having a Ward 1 and Ward 2 meeting for residents to meet with city council and administration of the city, express any concerns you have, to learn what's going on, latest events in the city. It is at Sidney Fenn Elementary School, again, at 7 o'clock, Tuesday, September 3. I'd encourage any residents who's interested in what's going on to be there. Also, I'd like to congratulate Chief Kenny, Police Department, and Medina County Drug Task Force. Over the weekend, they executed four arrest warrants on Foundry Street for drug charges. It's a great job keeping our neighborhood safe, and I appreciate the good job you do. Finally, on Friday, August 16, I had the pleasure of attending a great event on Bronson Street with Pastor Ruffin and Second Baptist Church. He sponsored for his parishioner kids and also the neighborhood and apartment nearby residents of all ages going back to school. It was called Rev Up Your School Year. It was co-hosted by High Voltage Kart Racing. Pastor Ruffin had three different classes going on in the morning, and if the children passed those classes, they were given passes to race the go-karts at High Voltage. They were treated to a hot dog lunch. They had inflatable jump things and, yeah, you know those things. And it was a good time. And unfortunately, Pastor Ruffin and I were going to be in a dunk tank, and unfortunately, it got there too late, and we were unable to do that, and I was very disappointed in that. And the only person more disappointed than me, I think, was Pastor Ruffin. But it was a great time and had a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields.
Another great event I just want to talk about is, as Eric said, is our farmer's market on Saturdays, but there's also a midweek farmer's market, and it is moving. It is moving to the South Town Cruisin' on Tuesday nights from 4 to 8. That's at the former Hawkins Market, the soon-to-be site of the Habitat for Humanity Restore. And now through September 24, 2019, the farmer's market, midweek farmer's market edition will be there at the same time as the Cruisin'. If you haven't had a chance to go to the Cruisin', it's another great event sponsored by Main Street Medina, and it's getting bigger every week. Stop down there and shop the midtown, or midweek farmer's market and enjoy the South Town Cruisin' as well. It's Tuesdays, 4 to 8, at the former Hawkins Grocery Store.
Thank you. Mr. Rose, you got anything?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Nicholas on his achievement to Eagle Scout. I never got there, but congratulations. This past several weeks while we were away, I've had a pleasant opportunity to talk to many residents. I was surprised at the number of people who have just moved into town in the last, say, 24 months or so. It was quite an eye-opener. They moved here for any number of reasons, and I'd like to say welcome to all of them. And they all commented on how well the city is run and how well we are to get where we are. And to tie in with Mr. Simpson's comments about, let's be nice to each other, let's remember what we did together to get us to where we are and why they got here. Okay? Let's, let's not allow some outside noise to impact that. I've mentioned that to the residents, the new residents, and they agree. So let's keep moving in the right direction, in the same direction, and keep all the oars moving together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamb.